...President Council Kehoe, President Council Capano, President Council Calucci, President Council Creighton, President Council Seh, President Council Ford, President Council Lozzi, President Council Net, President, President Council Phelan, President, President Council Trahan, President, eleven, President.
Can we all please rise for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Communications?
We have one communication from Iran and the mayor of the councils. I'm hereby appointing Ms. Linda Cavoni, 196 Local Street, to the Lind Municipal Finance Corporation to replace expired member James McGlaughlin. Ms. Cavoni's term is effective immediately, will expire on September 1st, 2014. Sincerely, Drew Lanning and Kennedy.
Motion to approve, second, roll call.
Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Kehoe?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
Public hearings?
First public hearing is petition enabler Development Associates, Inc., Oliver Toomey clerk, for permission to allow construction of four single-family dwellings in a business district lesser use at Summer and Morris Street.
Open the public hearing for anybody who wishes to speak in favor.
Good evening, Mr. President, City Council. My name is Ted Smith, I'm here behalf of the neighborhood Development Associates. We are seeking to build four single-family homes in a metro district for a rescue for lesser use, and I believe you brought a document back in front of you that shows the assessment act as well as four homes, the plans as well as the proposed plan and goals.
Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Anybody in favor? Seeing no one else wishes to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor, open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishes to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition, close the public hearing. Council Ford?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This has been a long process getting to the developer together with the owner, and these four singles will be a well addition to the neighborhood. It's been dilapidated area across the street. Peter and I work on this. He's going to have a single family over there, and we're going to widen and re-tight River Street. So this will make that whole Summer River Morris Street area very nice, and I hope the council approve.
I get his motion to approve, second, by Council Trahan. Discussion? Roll call.
Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Kehoe?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozzi?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
Council...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Creighton?
Mr. President, motion to suspend rules.
What purpose?
I'd like to move the update from the advanced property.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council Creighton?
Mr. President, a few weeks ago, the council requested representatives of the advanced family to come forward to the council for an update on the upon property. Council concerned with structural integrity, potential contamination, as well as wanting an update for the future plans. I've asked Jim Cowdell of EDIC, the guy who set the stage, to update us on what's happened over the course of a number of years before. We hear from the PNS representatives, so I'd like to ask EDIC Director Jim Cowdell to come forward to testify.
Mr. President, members of the council, I think what I'll do is give a few moments of history in in talk about where we are today. Restaurant, first Athena's restaurant in its chain opened up in Lynn, closed its doors late 2002, beginning in 2003 in that timeframe. January of 2007, EDIC began discussions with the Athena's family to work with the city to develop that land. As this body knows, and this body was the leader in the rezoning of the downtown, and because of that rezoning, today is about 250 new homes living in the downtown that really, and what council and Council Barton people know this, really are demanding that this property not stay in its current state. And so we started working with the owners and representative of the Athena's family in January of 2007. About that time, Mr. Zamore was here today, Mr. Zamore, representative of the family, showed us plans for to develop that site, and we endorsed those plans immediately. It was for mixed use. It was for retail slash commercial on the ground floor level, and above it would be housing. And as this party knows, that's exactly what Daddy and his own thought. April of 2007, we forwarded a buyer to the Athena's family. PNS was presented, which I have tonight. It was for $750,000. The PNS was never accepted. In fact, no communication happened. The owner never contacted the prospective buyer. And really, from that point in time, from April 2007 to 2011, four years later, nothing really happened. Those plans that were submitted in 2007 are still, I'm sure, the representative probably has them today, they're still beautiful plans. Because of the fact that nothing was happening, no cleaning up the property, just an ice floor, there's 37,000 square foot parking lot that is possibly used, building itself is in really horrible shape. Because of the lack of progress that was happening, and folks in this room know me, eminent domain would be the last option. It's something we do very, very reluctantly. At my recommendation, the EDIC board in 2011 voted to proceed with an eminent domain. And that was basically because development wasn't occurring, testing on the site was not occurring, money was not being invested into the property, communication had broken down, so we took that step. After the vote was taken, Mayor Kennedy met with the owner and representatives, came back to EDIC and asked us to open up communications further. We did. That brings us to 2012. 2012, we entered into agreement with the Athenases. We, meaning EDIC, went onto their property. We paid for the environmental testing, $28,000. Paid for that, and the test was completed within the last month. Those test results showed that there is, excuse me, contamination on the property, corroded solvents were found, and that information was sent to the owners of the property. What that means is, the owners of the property have 120 days, it's a legal notification, that they have to contact DEP and say that we now know that there's contamination on the property, and this is what is there. And so they have 120 days legally to do that. Speaking to the engineers, Weston and Sampson, that did the testing, cleanup cost is estimated to be hundreds of thousands of dollars. Talking to DEP, we, I think everybody is in agreement that the contamination came from the White's laundromat, so it's off-site migration. White's laundromat has filed a legal form with DEP saying that they don't have the means to clean up the property, meaning their property and any other contaminants, contaminants that were caused by them. DEP has since rejected that, so they are still liable financially liable to clean up their property as well as any other in that area. So, in talking with DEP, saying, where do we go from here? It's very common, this is not, you know, an isolated problem, that their development can still occur on this property, we still want it to happen. A barrier system would have to be implemented with a sub-sleptic pressurizing system, but it has been one of the more frustrating experiences of society at EDIC, to the building literally starting to fall down. A couple of weeks ago, the facade fell down, the parking lot is an ice floor. If there's any money invested into that property, I would like to see those receipts, because it really is an embarrassment. And it's certainly an embarrassment to the family that started its chain of restaurants right here in Lynn, to see the condition of that property and the lack of development. If I owned that property, council, the first thing I would have done is tested to see if there was contamination. Instead of coming in with development plans and saying this is what we want, the first step would be to do that testing. You know, and after five years, in order to get that testing done, EDIC had to step forward and say, we'll pay for the testing, let's get the testing done. So that's where we are today, that's the past and the present.
Questions for Mr. Cowdell. Council Trahan?
Thank you. Mr. Cowdell, you have good judgment. Would you say that that hill at least be torn down, with the signs stuck on the wall of the street, even on a public safety issue? Ever?
I think Mike Donovan, I believe he's here tonight, he would be better to give that professional opinion. The development plans that we had was to build on top of that site. Whether or not that can be done today, again, those plans are five years old, so...
I just feel like knowing from, you know, Brendan, know that I'd be certainly in support of, you know, supporting him if he wanted to.
Thank you, council. To your point, Mike Donovan, the executive director of the Inspector Service Department is here tonight, and I was going to ask him to come up to speak to the integrity of the building as well as its overall condition once, once generally finished.
Council Net?
Good evening, Mr. President. Is any more chance that we can negotiate with the owner, talk with the owner, is the last option or...
Again, eminent domain, counselor, is always my last step, and it's something that I do very reluctantly. I'm convinced, though, that a good day for the Athena's family is when nothing gets developed on that site. I really mean that. They have not shown me, or the city for that matter, really a good intention, you know, to make the property look, so that you're not embarrassed when you drive by. That was the first restaurant of a very successful family, right? Have some pride, put some money into the landscape, fix the parking lot, work with the city to develop the land. So I'm skeptical at this point, and that's because five years ago.
I understand, thank you.
Council Seh?
It is obvious that things feel like, I don't think they respect their father, because the memory of his right hand, Tom Tom, and a building's been terrible for many years. I agree with everything that Scott Al is saying. But I'm wondering is, because I know if I had a property or a house like that in my blood, I'd be on top of the building with the ISD trying to get something done. Have we been finding them for the condition of the building, the property? And I agree that, I don't think we should take it out of the hands, I think that's exactly what they want to do, wash their hands. I just can't believe the way that the Athena's family has disrespected the city in the memory of their father. And, you know, I know that the plans that were put on the table by them, it's smoke and mirrors, and that's all they've been showing us, so have we been finding on a daily basis?
Yeah, and as you know, we can be a great ISD department with you on top of it. I talk to Roy Jennings all the time about this, counselor, the board council is on top of it, they're here to address those complaints. But you know what, General Glover and Son, you know, it's been sat there for 20 years. You read in the paper last week, year four is supposedly being developed, and that took 13 years of negotiation, 13 years, and this property has been vacant since the end of
Council Net?
Thank you, Mr. President. Are they still paying the property taxes?
They are up to date as of May 1st. May 1st, we have not received a payment if they paid it, but they are up to date as of May 1st. If they're late, they will be a few days late.
Any other questions for Mr. Cowdell? Council Kehoe, please.
Mr. Cowdell, it's, again, obviously you can understand your frustration, and you can sense it in your tone and your choice words. What is the state of your relationship with the Athenas today? Do you speak at all in terms, are you only communicating through attorneys at this point?
Yeah, well, council, once attorneys get involved, it's hard to deal directly.
Economic development, attorneys, you know.
It's true, but for instance, so it was probably six months of going back and forth between two lawyers. Once EDIC said, we'll pay for the testing, because recognizing if we waited for the Athenases to pay for the testing, it would never happen. So once we said we would pay for the testing, it took six months to finalize the agreement to allow us to go on the property and do the testing. So that's an example of where we are. It's attorneys speaking to attorneys at this point, and that's too bad. We just want to see development, you know? If it's true that it's hundreds of thousands of dollars and coming up, then really the property is worth minimum money. EDIC has the ability to change down rounds, such as we did with Council Ford on Ohio Street. We cleaned up a laundromat, the same contaminants, and put single-family homes there. So we've done it before, we can do it here. But again, we sent them a cash offer back in April 2007, they never even responded. So I'm convinced that they don't want to develop, they don't want to sell. It's just going to sit there unless we tie it up.
Any other questions for Mr. Cowdell? Thank you, Mr. President. Council Creighton?
Mr. President, I'd like to ask Mike Donovan, the executive director of the Inspector Services Department, to just come and say a few words about the structural integrity of the site.
Good evening, councilors. Inspector Service has been out to this property quite numerous times in the past three years for health ed while the building issues. In 2009, there was odor complaint, and we ended up getting inside the buildings, hazardous condition, sprinkler system was not operational, they were storing food products in there since the restaurant had closed, they were given an order to clean up, make the building safe, they didn't clear their sprinkler system, and since that time, we have not been in the building. Went up for them for rodents later on, and again, I should say, 2010, they have been invading the property inside and outside by insects, and they're exterminated on that. However, in March of this year, there was a most serious incident on the property, when a portion of the facade of the building collapsed, collapsed into the public ways, this building directly abuts the public way. At that time, the family responded, and people came out and cleaned up the area. However, they were given 30 days to come forward with a structural engineering report as to the condition of the side, the condition of the building, the socket in front of the building is falling apart, facade was just collapsed, this evidence of water, and they're just looking at it from the outside of the facade, they have not responded. So the next step for us is to, again, demand to get inside, to go get a search order, order to search the inside, to verify the structural integrity of the building, and then also with cooperation of the fire department to post the exterior of the building as to do not enter. It's a hazard case of fire, essentially fighting from the outside. The building has not been maintained properly. For a facade to fall off the building indicates to me that there's infiltration of water throughout the parapet area, possibly through the roof and through the brick itself. If some fell off, more will fall off, it's just a matter of time. And the failure of the owners to bring forth, as they were directed to order to do by the inspector, a report from structural engineer, how are we going to make safe the rest of the facade? It is trouble. We generally tend to see this type of behavior in somebody who's either about to abandon their property, has abandoned the property, or is in foreclosure. That is most likely not the case here, but it's the same, same attitude that we get from that type of property, or that's essentially ready to run, and has actually known we got for their property.
Any questions for Mr. Donovan?
Council Capano? I know with some of the problems we've had with abandoned homes and foreclosures, and we've had to put demolition orders for some of the houses that were really in bad shape. How close is this business to being in that? I imagine that's why you need a structural engineering report, but how close is this building to some of these demolition orders that we've had put in with some of these homes that have been in such dis...
The only thing stopping us from putting a demolition order on this property at this point would be that structural engineering report. A portion of it already collapsed, which tells me that there are some structural weaknesses to the facade and its connection to the main structure. They were given us 30 days to have structural engineer come in and evaluate, and they did not respond. That report was due about three weeks ago, so it's just a matter of...
So, Council, this would fall off, so we're saying we need to initiate a court order to do that, or have they been given a court order to do that?
We did not preempt it. We knew this was happening, we wanted to see what happened here, they'd come forward, we could deal with them rather than going to the court, because the court is, it's taking us three or four months of this time with the courts before going in, petitioning for something and getting it done. If we can't get in based on the evaluation of the exterior, we would probably order them to either shore it up, or be late, or tear it down, because it is in danger of a future collapse of the facade, line to the side.
Council Trahan?
Thank you. This is just as Mr. Capano said, I mean, usually what we do in this situation, and it's worked in the past, is we file for demolition, and then all of a sudden, they come on it. And it just sounds like, you know, and listen to Mr. Cowdell and anybody else here, we've been back and forth with them for, you know, since 2002. They never respond, now the building's fallen in the streets, becoming a public safety hazard. I mean, this, this has all the ingredients for a real good demolition, you know? File it next, file it tomorrow, have them in here next month, they don't come, tear the building down. It'll be the best thing for the city, and it'll be the best thing for the safety of the resident city, and I walk by there every day. I mean, we're trying to bring back the downtown, we got people living down there, we got businesses coming down there, and now, you know, you're going to be, you're going to walk all the streets, because we're going to put, you know, the hustles down there from the DBW so they don't get, you know, killed by a piece of the facade, so I just think, you know...
I agree.
I know it's, you know, Council Creighton's, you know, said he's worried, and I know he's on top of it, but I just, just kind of, I think calls for a demolition. I think that's all they're going to get their attention, honestly.
Council Seh?
I do agree with Council Trahan that it's a public safety issue, but obviously with the way the Athena's family has shown, that they're not going to respond to the city. What I'm curious about, I would like Mr. Donovan to come back up for a minute, I'm sorry for that, but, you know, what would it cost us? Just a general idea, because I know tearing a house is about 25 to 30 grand, so we're probably going to have some considerable money here, and with hazardous material on a site being considered hazardous, with demolition being considered hazardous, and I know that we can put a lien on the opposite, I mean, I could tie the property forever.
This would be an expensive demolition. We do not know the extent of hazardous materials within the building, most likely it is asbestos, insulation on the pipes for a building that age. And we got the underground contamination, if we did tear down the structure because of that, we would not be able to remove the foundation because of the contamination, also because of directly flooding the street. That'd be expensive to tear the foundation walls out, we'd have to support the street. So most likely, if we did this, we would just remove the superstructure itself and fill the foundation hole for the time being until those other issues could be addressed. Given the size of the building, I would have to anticipate, without knowing what's inside the building, that we're probably in a neighborhood of between 75 and 125,000 dollars minimum, without knowing what's in there.
Any other questions for Mr. Donovan? Council Seh?
Would it make sense for the council to put a demo order on that and take it into court and see if a judge can force them to demolish the building because of public safety issues?
It would, we would need to get a court order to go in, to do the hazardous material study and see what's in there, and then we would, we're building in the street, like, it would, it would make sense, it's probably a good bit of homework we need to do ahead of time to get the council enough information, so they'll know what this situation is with Lincoln, but yes, that would be the next step.
And Council Seh, as you well know, if Council Creighton decides to move in that direction, the proper motion would be to set down a public hearing for a demolition order so there would be time and place. Council Net?
Thank you. You talk about demolition, so if you do to bring the building down, so who will pay for this? The city or the landlord? The council money, I have a lot of questions.
If the council put an order out, then it would be up to the city to pay. I would put it up to bid, and look a little bit, whatever the cost is, you know, a little better, as well as the hazardous materials study, I would come to front of the council and look to Mike Donovan to verify that.
Council Seh?
I have a quick question. Because I know something similar happened over in East Boston, where they were fearful that building was going to collapse, and the city, it was actually, they were able to just go in there and determine, without the property's always, you know, approved to do so. I mean, are we fearful that this building could fall into the street?
We don't have enough information without getting inside. In that case, in Boston, I believe somehow the city had access to the interior of the building. Without access to the interior of the building, I couldn't tell you if the structure itself was going to collapse. What I can tell you is the facade has already collapsed, and therefore, because it directly floods the public way, it is a, it's something that needs to be addressed. It hasn't fallen yet, it's a result of the water and the freeze thaw cycle that it will continue to deteriorate, I guess.
Council Creighton?
Mr. President, I understand that we have a representative of the Athena's family here, that I'd like to give him an opportunity to answer some of these concerns and give us an update on their development plans as well as the integrity of the building.
Okay, is there a representative from the Athena's family?
Good evening. My name's Wes Amor, and I've been doing consulting on some of the Athenas' real estate and development opportunities since 1986, including in South Boston and a little bit in Lynn, as Mr. Cowdell explained. I guess I'll introduce myself a little bit and the situation, and try to answer a couple of the questions that came up impromptu, and then go through some of these materials. So my background is actually, I have a degree in real estate development from MIT, it's about 25 years out of date, and I've worked mostly on the South Boston larger, South Boston waterfront developments, where I structured some of the larger deals there and presented the development plans to both the State Corning Committee and the Federal Corning Committee. I think that a little bit of the history has been told here, the Athena's family did operate a white tailfut restaurant here for over 50 years, it was the highest grossing restaurant in the state during its peak. I don't know the exact date that they closed, but I'll take Mr. Cowdell's word on that. We did work extensively with EDIC in 2007 and 2008. We had Steffi and Bradley do four sets of, four iterations of plans of different types of mixed use. We looked at reuse of the restaurant in addition to new building on the parking lot site, and then we also looked at demolition of the restaurant in combination with new building on both the restaurant parcel and the parking lot parcel. In 2008, EDIC agreed to oversee an environmental review of the site. The White's, it's called laundry, but it's really clean, so it's not laundry. The White's pollution has been pretty well-known for over a decade. Our site has been drilled and tested by many different parties, on behalf of White's, on behalf of the state, on behalf of the US Post Office that at one point was looking at acquiring the White's, but backed off after they did some testing, maybe too far or too close. And then in 2008, we did hire a licensed site professional to oversee the work that EDIC had agreed to manage. We also hired Rizzo Tetra Tech, which is, I think, the largest environmental consulting firm in the state and one of the largest in the country. They had done some exceptionally good work for the US Post Office, which unfortunately... They had done some exceptionally good work for the U.S. Post Office, which unfortunately concluded that the pollution levels in that district of Lynn were far too high for them to consider a purchase of the Whites' property. That effort, we drilled and presumably samples were taken, but it evaporated. It never went anywhere, never heard back, even though we had hired a licensed site professional and Rizzo Tetra Tech as well. So it's also correct that in the last year and a half or so, we have been back in contact with EDIC, also with the office of the mayor. The last 20 pages or so here are about 25% of the presentation that we gave to the EDIC board and the mayor a little less than a year ago about the development plans that we had considered. I mean, basically, we did follow EDIC's wishes to form a mixed-use development that would have residential as well as retail and office. I know it's been an effort on the part of the city to bring some new population to the downtown center. In large part, the concept of those development plans were four stories of underground garage and then several hundred thousand square feet of new development on top of that. We are delighted that EDIC has gone ahead and started some new testing. From what I've seen, Weston and Sampson looks like a pretty, pretty good group. So I have given you the 50-page report, I don't think anyone already have it from Weston and Sampson, which is a preliminary report, but it's a nice update to prior work. We had certainly hoped that water flow through this part of Lynn would have lessened the pollution, but it has not. So vinyl chloride levels on our property and in the streets of Lynn are about 300 times the safe legal limit. Nobody should be digging under Willow Street, nobody should be looking at repairing utilities there without an environmental health protocol in place before they do that. At this point in time, the pollution has spread several blocks down Willow Street, we're the only offsite property we know that's been tested, but inevitably, this pollution has gotten onto many other properties in the central district of Lynn. It is not a problem that we can solve by cleaning up our site because the pollution continues to emanate. At this point in time, Whites Laundry is continuing to actively pollute that area of downtown Lynn, including the Athanas' property, but other properties as well, and the testing that is in your hands has shown that the city's streets are also now a source of pollution that's going onto other properties. The end product of tetrachloroethylene, after it turns first into trichloroethylene, is vinyl chloride, and right now, there is quite high levels of trichloroethylene under Willow Street, so that adds a few, that's a source of future levels of vinyl chloride. Unfortunately, the way this works is that the levels of pollution at the Whites' site are not typical, they are extraordinarily high. This is not the neighborhood laundry that had a little leak in the course of business. This was a large industrial-scale laundry that was pouring barrels and barrels and barrels of toxins into the ground over the years. And the tetrachloroethylene evolves into trichloroethylene, and when it turns into vinyl chloride, it gets more volatile, and that's why the legal safe limits are much touchier with regard to the vinyl chloride. So with regard to the engineering, for example, I was unaware of the request for structural engineering report, if I can be forwarded that information, I can try to help with that. We've been, I've been cooperating with Weston and Sampson in making sure they have all the access they needed to our site in the course of their efforts. In order for anybody to develop that site, it's not financially, there is no lender, and there is no large developer that will put in underground garage, tear down the existing building, and build a new structure there without an awful lot more environmental work, and work that stops the source at its origin and then lays out a protocol for how to deal with this whole district of Lynn, not with just the Athanas' property. Beyond that, it'd be very difficult to finance a 200,000-square-foot new building with four stories of underground garage with not just an active polluting site across the street, but a hole in the ground across the street. Right now, Whites has a 14-foot hole in the ground, that was an initial effort to remove some of the toxins. Unfortunately, we didn't get enough of the toxins to stem the ongoing pollution. So there is a need for a small district area plan, it could be supported by the private developers, certainly, I would argue with the Athanas', that they should be generous in supporting that, but I think without a small area urban design and development plan, it'd be very hard to do scale new development at that site. And then finally, you're gonna need an economy, and this is the least of the issues tonight, but you're gonna need an economy that will support that scale of new development in downtown Lynn, but I don't see any reason why you can't end up there, you have a lot of great building, you have a lot of great fabric in downtown Lynn, as you all know. So why don't I stop there and see if there are questions for me?
Counselor, before we really get into the environmental concerns, like the conceptual plan you presented us here tonight, I think my first and foremost concern is that of public safety. And I was horrified to see some of the pictures that my constituents sent me of the facade that crumbled, and, I mean, right on the sidewalk, it could kill someone. And from Mike Donovan's testimony, as well as work with Rogers and Inspection Services, I've seen a clear lack of communication in, an unresponsiveness to any of the concerns. This is, this is public safety, this isn't economic development, this isn't waiting for the economy, this is our citizens walking down the street. I, you said that you weren't aware of any of these concerns, that's even more troubling than if you were, you chose not to respond. Well, I'd just like to, like to hear from your end and from the fans, and why these, why there's been a response.
Right, well, I'm not in charge of their property, so I did involve, when they asked me to get involved in different aspects. I did come up a week after the report, and I think I'd been cleaned up by then, I couldn't see any collapse of the site at that point, but I don't...
I apologize, I actually didn't hear what your title was, I think your name was Wigsay Moore? What capacity are you here in this evening? Thank you.
Well, I, as I said at the beginning, I have consulted on aspects of Athanas' real estate and real estate development since 1986. But I'm not in charge of their properties or their operations.
But if I understand, and if I, if I may, Counselor, that you are here tonight at the quest of the Athanas' family in response to the letter from the city council, so in fact, you're representing the owner of that property this evening, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Pryton? So I mean, going back to a number of suggestions of the counselors here, typically in this situation, we would call for a demolition, and I think based on the report of Mike Donovan, and based on the lack of response and the lack of communication, and again, here tonight we have no information, this would be normally something that I would assume, I think this is, it's a last option, as well as eminent domain, as Jim Caldel mentioned before, I mean, the city wants to work with the Athanas' family, but again, we asked for information, and we're here tonight, and we're given a conceptual plan and a long list of chemicals that I can't pronounce. I, I have serious concerns with this, and I'd like to let the, all the counselors ask their questions.
Counselor Trahan?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, so basically, they've set someone up and their family, we get this Dargan Cody show, this stupid development, and then he comes here and tells us that all downtown is contaminated. So I just wanna know what's up, we just want them to come and tear the building down, just tear it down. They bring you here, you don't tell us you have no authority for the Athanas family, then why'd you come? I don't understand why they sent you. We need some of the Athanas' family to come and do something with the building, it's been sitting there for 10 years. I don't understand, and now you're telling us that it is all contaminated, and this isn't feasible, then why'd you waste your time bringing it? I don't understand. We want them to come here, we want them to tell us what we're gonna do with the building, and right now, we should tear it, I think we should tear it down tomorrow. I mean, really, it should be torn down. The building's fallen on the street, someone's gonna be killed, as Counselor Pryton said. I mean, this is ridiculous. You, you need to go back to them and tell them that they need to come here and see us, the people that own the building, the people that ran their business here for 50 years and made millions of dollars, those are the people that should come here and answer for us. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not, you know, upset with you, but I just think, they just wasted their time, I think it was buying the time. They sent you and paid you, I don't know what they paid you, to come and tell us all this, it was just stupid, the Dargan Cody show.
Counselor Kay, I think, Mr. President, sir, you know, when I first heard that the families are allowed the city to go on and test their land, I thought you guys were absolutely insane to allow a government agency to do that, because once the contaminants are identified, the cat's out of the bag. But now I'm having a strategic strategy here, and trying to show, oh, it's not just our property, it's kind of this whole large area, you have a bunch of issues, which I'm not gonna get into today, but at least explain to me why the family allowed us to do this study, which, by the way, costs us $28,000. And to Counselor Trahan's point, the proposal you set this day, or showed us today, is for a very large-scale development, which, I don't, I don't recall Counselor Pryton asking for you to do this major, huge development. I think the question here today is, since you know a lot about the property, why cannot be built? Can you pave and redo that parking lot over and fix that building and put a restaurant or something like that in there? I wouldn't, what's preventing you from doing that?
Well, I, there might be somebody else who would wanna do that, I'm not sure that they could rehab that building, it's gonna be economic.
So the owners have allowed the building to dilapidate to the point where they can't rehab that building, so there's really just one option, is what you're saying, is that the building needs to come down?
No, I don't think it has to do with any dilapidation, I'm just thinking it has to do with age.
That's the line, the building's fallen on the street.
Well, let me ask you this, in your, in your professional capacity, would the Adenises be allowed to repave that parking lot and utilize it as parking space?
Yeah, they do have, there's no reason they couldn't repay it, they do use it for paved parking now, it's not got a lot of business, there is a person in the booth there...
I would say, yeah, the fence is kind of confusing, it's really, it's difficult to identify with the aesthetics of it all, but to the building point, the envelope itself, paying taxes on it, why not have a tenant? Why not, why not have a tenant there? I just, I get some views that the alternative to us is that you put somebody in there, and we're gonna tear it down. So please explain the economics of how I would, I'm assuming the tenant is much more lucrative than tearing down the building?
Well, I think that when we were working with EDIC in 2007 and 2008, the judgment of all parties was that it would be best to redevelop that site.
But you agree, a number of times have changed, you said it yourself, it has a number of times have changed, so it's, it's not a viable project for any of the finances, so that is completely off the table. So now that we're not discussing what a mini development is, that's gone, what about getting a tenant in that building, you'd be having that building to get it to be coming part of the community again, rather than for a multi-million dollar development, right? Because that building could...
Well, I think if the tenant could, if the rent from the tenant could fund the improvements necessary for the tenant, that that would be a viable option. With regard to redevelopment, it wouldn't be a development that would be like a condo conversion, I mean, it would take several years to build anyway. So you would, you would be aiming at starting it before an economic peak, so you would hit the economic peak when the building...
So it's not a financial...
Well, no, that's right, that's right, no, that, that in fact was, and the contamination through you is, is not a strategy on our part, it's something that has to be dealt with, doesn't, as far as I know, cover all of downtown, but it definitely covers that district of Lynn, and it's, it's gonna have to be done.
Well, so is the building, you'd have to create a building...
Yeah, I agree with that, but the building, the building is not the large problem with regard to redevelopment. The contamination is the large problem with regard to redevelopment.
I agree, by everywhere, you know, you're stuck there, so you gotta, but we're stuck with your building, so if you figure out a way to maybe fix that building up, put a tenant in there, I think you'd have a lot more happy faces here in the community than doing nothing and us tearing down your building and fighting you for the last 10 years, it's just not, it doesn't happen.